...the last several months before we start GORVs, we want to begin with a part of prayer today. We'll ask one of our community members, Black Gap Tim Sayer, who's the pastor of Christian Union Church, to start us off today with a prayer for ourselves.
Hello, my friend. Father, we come to you, Lord, this evening, and thank you, God, for everything that you've done in our lives and what you're going through. Ask you, God, to be with the school system. We ask you to bless our superintendent and his staff, give them wisdom and knowledge. Our board of members, God, and all the way to principals, Lord, to teachers, all the way down, God, to the students. We ask you to protect them, watch over them, and guide them and direct them, Lord. Watch over our meeting tonight, Lord, help everything be done the way that it should be, God, and for their kids. And we always will praise you and teach you.
I call the meeting to order, Johnson County School Board meeting, March 25th, 2019.
We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to turn it over to the peers for a series of people who want to be present. All right, at this time, my students that are here for the energy fair and the academic recognition, if you'll step up here to the side so you can lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, come on up, guys. All right, guys, there's the flag. You can start.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in a reasonable, liberty, and justice for all.
Do y'all want to hang on right there? But we're going to recognize tonight, and we're going to start off with our energy fair. We're in that place. In kindergarten, third grade, is our STEM project. We have Peyton Adams and Marla Davis, we grew that. Okay, in second place, Coach Stewart, Canadian Conley, I don't think they're here. Third place, Dylan Miller from it, and Natalie Mayhem. And our fourth and sixth grade STEM project, Nicholas Five plays first. Are you at Nick? He's right here. Cassidy Rainey plays second. All right, in third place is Josh Fitzpatrick. Now, Mark DeWitt, Josh. And take two, three visual arts. First place was Kylie Simmons. Second place was Natalie Webb, I don't think she's there either. And Trinity Calloway, third, she's not here. Fourth through six visual arts was, first place was Kimmy Johnson. She was a play practice player. Second was Natalie Webb, and, I'm sorry, second was Tori Fairchild. She's not here. And third is Latisha LaMaster. And then multimedia take three, Carson O'Brien won first place. Is Carson here?
(Inaudible).
Makes ball, okay. Second place was Emma Ferguson, step up here, Emma. I'm sorry, go ahead. Fourth through sixth grade performing arts, first place was Ava O'Briens. Tracy Price and Heidi Blanton. Wrong ball, okay, I understand. All right, so those were our energy fair places. Now, when we go to academics, our fourth and fifth grade county academic tournament, we, the team plays first in quick recall. Or is this fourth and fifth only? Fourth and fifth only up here right now, right? So we got fourth and fifth grade academics. Team plays first in quick recall. Language arts, Susie Kretzer plays second. Science, Amy Lee plays second. Lila Back plays third in science. Arts and humanities, Lila Back plays first. Suzie Kretzer plays second. Randy Horst plays third. And then in overall season, we was first in quick recall, right? We played third overall. Suzie Kretzer was first place in language arts. Suzie was second place in arts and humanities. And then Lila Back plays fourth in science and second in arts and humanities. All right, guys, we get a group picture, go behind the board members right there. Walk around behind the board members there. Not yet, he's pictured. Go ahead. Y'all gotta keep it straight, you know how that works.
Guys, this video will be on foot hills. If you get that, you have to put it on there, I don't want you to get out of here.
You been looking behind your kid right there. All right, do we have the sixth grade? Come on up here, big guy. All right, we got two representatives remaining for sixth grade academics. Abby, all right, we got three remaining, get it. Four in sixth grade, our sixth grade showcase this year, language arts. Chloe Bradley plays fourth. Bryce Ferguson plays second. Right here's Bryce. And Chloe Bradley plays third. And Matt, Bryce plays first, and Nicholas plays fourth. Here's another neat thing about Bryce. Bryce plays third in district and third in region for Johnson County Middle School and competed with the Johnson County Middle School Academic Team State Competition. And then overall for the season, language arts, Chloe Bradley plays third. Bryce Ferguson plays third in science. And Matt, Bryce plays first overall for the season, and Nick finished third for the season. And then Heidi Blanton finished fifth, so. You gotta keep a hand on him, he'll get a picture too. Yeah, Abby was also multimedia, people through takes, first place. All right, let's get him to step here, so I gotta go back to him now. All right, something interesting here. Student reading the mission statement is Macy Bowen, and Macy's grandpa, Woody Bowen, top here, okay? The student reading the vision statement, Suzie Kretzer, her grandfather, Homer Pickle climber, top here. And the student reading our core values, Josh Fitzpatrick, is grandfather Larry Jennings, and top here, and was the principal here. So our mission statement is Macy Bowen.
Our mission statement, the ultimate educational experience for every child every day.
And our vision statement is Suzie Kretzer.
Our vision is to be an innovative school district focused on learning without boundaries.
And our core values, Mr. Josh Fitzpatrick.
My core values, integrity of leadership, commitment, and service.
And continuing with the recognition, just now time for the Golden Eagle Award. Reminder, we give these awards away every month to one certified member, one classified member of our Johnson County staff who have been nominated and improvement to go above and beyond the regular call of duty. Each month, as they're awarded, each recipient is given a certificate plus a Golden Eagle. The Golden Eagle is special to me and a lot of us in the fact that it is designed and printed by the engineering group at Johnson County High School and painted by the painting department at Johnson County High School. So each member will be given that, and it's also donated each month and sponsored by Castle Jewelry. And on the label says Be Golden, Golden Eagle Award. So for a classified person, this recipient of the Golden Eagle Award truly goes above and beyond for every child. It is said that she is a great asset to the school and the community. Performing regular home visits, she sees firsthand children's needs and has purchased items out of her own pocket to help meet those needs. During the flooding situation a few years ago, many flat gap homes were lost. Yet this person went out into the community assisting families with basic needs. She didn't stop until she visited and assisted every single family who had lost their home. Always smiling and with a great attitude, she works well with her peers as well with family, students, and parents. Congratulations to this month's classified Golden Eagle Award winner, Black Gap Villain Ranger Resource Center, to Ms. Pam Tackett. It's very hard to keep these secrets and get the people here that we need here. So the certified person, working at multiple schools, the certified recipient of the Golden Eagle Award has a great impact on many students and staff in the Johnson County School District. Not only does she ensure students' physical and emotional needs are met, but relieves principals from tedious distractions that take them away from their work and hand. She is referred to as a technology technician, testing coordinator, teacher leader, soundboard technician, and performs many other roles in order to maintain a safe, educational, and pleasant environment. She demonstrates her ability to react to unfavorable situations in a professional manner as well as adding a little humor to brighten the day. Exceptional candidate for the Golden Eagle Award certified recipient, Ms. Amy Case. Now, while she's coming up here, we'll tell a little story. We had to tell Amy a lie, she thought all this time that her sister was getting... Look what a good job you did getting everybody back there. Thanks again. Need a motion to approve the minute for February 25th, 2019, where the meeting, deals and payrolls in March, February, 2019. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Innovation carries. Innovation report?
Kathy Ditchcradles.
Now, Ms. Rappert not here tonight. We are asking to approve the painting, Chairman Hart, and that work is for the simulation of ATC's period work as well as K fix to add to the sort of performance.
Need a motion? Any questions? All in favor, say aye. New business?
Eight school reports, Black Gap Villain Ranger.
All right, first off, I want to start off with the fact that Black Gap Villain Ranger just received the 21st Century Grant for next year, and it was in part, major part due to Ms. Destin Lullen, Ms. Patricia Whitten, and Mr. Kimberly Gibbons, and one of our parents. The three of them worked a lot of hours together writing that grant, and we got awarded it. What that does, that gives our school $150,000 a year for the next few years to do after-school programming for our students out here to meet their needs and offer some things that maybe they wouldn't have an opportunity to do. We're really excited about it, we're working out the particulars on it right now. We don't know exactly what it's going to look like to get to after we have the meeting, the meeting taking place here in the next couple of weeks, and those type of things. And as soon as we figure it out, I'll let you guys know, we'll do a video on it. I'll put you in what it is. I do know this, that open house is going to be, August 6th, that August 6th will be open house. And at that time, we will have a back-to-school bash that is funded by the 21st Century Grant and will encourage all parents and children to come out and sign up for the program. And we'll have food and fun platables and those type of things. So we're really excited about that situation. Another thing I'd like to report to our community is that our boosters club have really worked hard this year to raise money, and they just purchased four fun platables for our school. So it's going to open up a lot of reward activities and things that we can do for our students without spending a lot of money on those things. So thankful to our parents and staff that are working on our booster club, so thank you guys for that. What I want to show you right now is a little, my five-minute video. Ms. Pennington put it together, or she headed up putting it together, but the sixth grade students went around, interviewed staff and students, a video of them, and they done the editing and stuff on this. What program did you use, Ms. Pennington?
I'm moving, and they did from start to finish everything. They wrote the interview questions, they went around to all the teachers. And Nick is one of the students who put this together, and when I gave them a five-minute time limit, I think they all wanted to run me out of the room because they had such wonderful videos that they said, "We can't cut this." "Well, it's gonna be five minutes." "We can't cut this, we gotta cut this." And they did such a wonderful job. They edited it, put it together, really became pros using iMovie.
So this is a complete student production right here, guys.
Has Grayhound Grant helped you?
Yes.
Do you like being in Grayhound Grant?
Yes. Please.
Has Grayhound Grant helped your classroom?
Grayhound Grant time has definitely helped my classroom by giving me the opportunity to work with small groups to provide both enrichment and intervention to those students that students that I feel haven't met the learning permits and that really need it.
How would you describe Grayhound Grant?
For me, I use Grayhound Grant three days a week to work with the students who need reinforcement in reading and language concepts. And then on Fridays, I use Grayhound Grant to work with students who need enrichment and we practice reading and fluency.
Does Grayhound Grant improve your students' performance?
Grayhound Grant definitely improves my students' performance, and I can see a major growth in those students that I have pulled constantly during the year during Grayhound Grant time.
Has Grayhound Grant helped you? What is one thing you've learned from Grayhound Grant?
Helped read better.
Do you like being in Grayhound Grant?
Yes.
Yes, Grayhound Grant has helped my students tremendously. Grayhound Grant is a small group of students, usually about four students, and we work four times a week, thirty minutes a day. We work on sometimes sight word skills, word recognition skills, sometimes we work on fluency rate and also their comprehension skills. Yes, all of my students have improved during Grayhound Grant. They have increased their fluency rate, they have increased their sight word recognition, and it's also helped with their writing skills.
Has Grayhound Grant helped you?
Yes.
What is one thing you've learned in Grayhound Grant?
Cause and effect.
Do you like being in Grayhound Grant?
Yes.
Do you feel like Grayhound Grant has helped you?
Yes.
Grayhound Grant is a wonderful addition to Black Gap Village. It's a great way to allow students that are not mastering a certain skill to give them the opportunity to have time with them, to work with them, and get them up to mastering on that certain skill. And also for enrichment, I use it a lot for enrichment.
What does it mean to be NearPod certified?
To be a NearPod certified educator means I can train other educators in our district on how to use NearPod in their classroom. And NearPod is a wonderful tool to incorporate virtual field trips, collaboration boards, different activities like that for science, I've been using simulation labs, and I also used it for NTI.
Well, it's helped me when I get stuck on stuff, and I can't really do anything. I did mostly stay, we can learn, and it helps. Well, that's just from time in third grade where we were talking about diameter, and we got to feel to help explore it, and it was really cool.
Grayhound Grant is a wonderful assignment to my classroom. It is the gift of teaching, if you have a student who is just about to get done and right before it's time to change their skills, you should have that child for an extra thirty minutes that very day, and you can go over that concept, and you can do more than that student, it just makes it like that day. Grayhound Grant is built into our schedule, four days a week. We have thirty minutes, which we can use to pull any student who did not master that day's skill. Extra examples, enrichment with that skill, whatever that group of students needs that day, that's what we do. Yes, more than once, I have had students stay for Grayhound Grant on a difficult task, look that they were really struggling with, and then next day, when they came into my curriculum to their assessment, perfect scores came out.
We had an older NTI days, and we didn't get enough time to work on our STEM project. They only want to stay for Grayhound Grant, and we got extra thirty minutes to work on the STEM project. When the head of wants to learn the format, and I missed it, and I was really struggling with it. And it's repeated as we stayed, and I did, and missed out on the gathering.
Well, congratulations on all of the good year and good life, granted, we'll have to be truthful with you. Everyone, great job. Next on the same day, six C, Ms. Pat.
Today, I want to share with you the results of our Exacypath exams that we give. You guys were so kind last year, well, this is our second year that we're using this program. At the beginning of the school year, we have each student in kindergarten, all the way through eighth grade in the areas of reading, language arts, and math. This is not a state test, it's not one of those tests that we have to give from the State Department that goes along with our spring testing. This is a separate one that we choose to give our students. There is a law that says that every school has to have a universal screener. A screener that diagnoses students where they're at and puts them on a path for success. So that's exactly what Exacypath does. So at the beginning of the year, we diagnosed, we tested each student, and then mid-year, we did the same thing. Now, between these timeframes, though, students are put on their own pathway based on the results of this first test that they took. So if they're scoring really high, then they have started off, they start off on a pretty high rate for their grade level. If they start out pretty low, then that's the path that they are put on. So the results are coming in from the pre-test, the first of the year test, to the mid-year test. And this is, in a math world, this is exactly what we would want to see. This is the area of language arts, but you can see that the red indicates students who are below average. So at the beginning of the year, we had this many students, and that's about, up to, close to about 58% who were below average in language arts. But you can see how that average went down from the pre-test to the mid-test, so that's really, really good. Now, students that were on grade level, we were right at 30% for our entire district. So this isn't just for Flat Gap School, this is for the entire district. But look what's happened from the pre-test to the mid-test. We've gone up, the students are scoring on average at a higher rate, so that's really good. The dark green represents the students that started the year above average, and look at the increase here. So it's definitely showing us the results that we hope that it could. Now, Chrissy, if you'll scroll on down, I want us to take a look at each screen. Go on to the last one, and then let me see it. Yes, yes. So here we can see, this is Flat Gap, and I'm not going to go over all the numbers, but just as an indication, there were 70% of the students at Flat Gap in language arts at the beginning of the year that were below average. That average has decreased from 70 to 52, so that's a very, very good decrease. The same thing for on-grade level, there were 20% of students on grade level. That has increased up to 33%. And then above grade level, only 10% of students at Flat Gap were above grade level in language arts, which has improved up to 15%. Now, there's plenty of teachers in this room right now, and I believe they would all agree with me that this is not an easy test, this is not an easy program. It's based 100% on the standards that are a part of Kentucky's academic standards. And so it's not an easy task, these teachers are taking the time out of their day every day to give an assessment such as this and to trip the students on the pathways that they need to be on. They have to have time to be on their computers to do it, not a large amount of time, but still yet. It does take a little bit of time out of their day. But we really, really feel like the program is being successful. So here's Highland Elementary's scores, and we can see the very same thing, the very same kind of trend data. Let's go on, the middle school is also represented here, and as is Porter and WR. So I won't say all of those numbers, but every single school, we're seeing exactly the same kind of results. So let's move on to another content area, let's do it that way, and we'll be real quick about it. So for math, look at this, same thing here. The below average went from 60% down to about 45%. The on-average went from about 33% up to almost 50%. And the above average went about 5% up to over 10%. So that really speaks volumes, and again, I've looked at the data very closely. You can look at every, the numbers at every single school, and you will see that the numbers went down in the right place, and they went up in the right place. And then let's open up the last one. And so here's our reading. Overall, this is, again, this is the entire district, not just a particular school. 50% were below average in reading when we started school, and that's down tremendously to about 42, it looks like. And the on-average, about 30 up to close to 40%. And then the above average, about 18 up to about 25%. So we're really excited about this program, and we appreciate you guys agreeing to purchase it for us. Again, this is our second year. So now, what we're really hoping to see, the results from the state test that we give in the spring, that it too will match up with what we're seeing with this type of program. So we will have one more diagnostic to give at the end of the year, and we're hoping to see the results continue to go in this pathway. So any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the new business, six C, Ms. Fairchild and Ms. Tackett.
So we belong to a program called Aspire, so it's a grant for the U.S. Department of Education. And so it's called American Success Through Purposeful Instruction and Rigorous Education. And so we are going to be able to take some kids to Washington, DC, which will be on the agenda for next month. And so we're also getting to do a congressional academy, which is like a history camp, and the kids are all excited about it because at the end, if they come all five days, they'll get paid $100 each. And so I see a lot of elementary teachers here, they have one for elementary, it's called Charge. So Wendy, we can't remember her last name, she's in Charge of it, but if you will email us, we will get you picked right up with that. So it's a new program, just started this year. So it's a new program, just started this year. Heart, I did that before and it's ended. So myself, this year, I'm going to get like $70,000 by doing all these different things that they have us do. And I have a lot more knowledge of history than what I had before. It's a really good program. Yeah.
So I've just joined this year in the Aspire program and I'm really excited. It's going to give us an opportunity to present things to kids that they've not had a chance to do before. We're excited about the congressional academy and the kids coming into history camp. Some of them are like, "We have to do work." But yeah, you do, but it'll be fun work. And we're going to do a project and we're going to do field trips and we're going to learn about government. So they're getting really excited about that and I'm excited to be a part of that. Something that we got wind of in our last meeting is that KDC, because this is a federal grant, they might, we know we don't have funding for some of our professional development, that we might be able to use through this grant, borrow, borrow some of their speakers and some of their content people and maybe offer PD to send them to our social studies school. And the lady that spoke with us, Deb Colan, she was awesome.
She was.
She was kind of focused on ELA, but she would be good for, like, just, she was inspirational and she would work about how to, just activities and student engagement and that kind of thing. And she's willing to come if we can work her in. And it would be a good opportunity if we can soften some of that grant money into our PD, we might see if we can steal some of that for some of our own other teachers. So I'm excited. So if you have any questions or whatever, you can email either one of us. We would be more than pleased to hook you up. And Jason Wheeler, he's working with Aspire.
He's the second guy in command and he used to be a teacher in the high school.
So he's one of our hometown boys and he's out there.
He likes to help Johnson County.
And that will be good. Kudos for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have 6C, Mr. Cochrane.
As you've been aware, we've been working on a new webpage over the last several months. Excited to say that we're going, go live, we're shooting for Friday to go live and transition from old page to the new. Along with that webpage though, we also have a new app that's developed, Johnson County Schools app. So I want to take a minute and a half and show everyone here, introduce everyone to the app and show you how to download it and how to set the configurations if you're interested in following that.
Introducing the brand new app for Johnson County Schools on Android and iPhone. It's everything JC schools in your pocket. This is the home screen. Tap the schools icon in the top right or swipe left to select a specific school. Tap the three horizontal lines in the top left or swipe right to see all of the menu items. To turn on push notifications, tap Settings and select Turn On Notifications. You can even pick which school to receive notifications from. The Events section shows a list of all events throughout the district. You can use this button to add an event to your calendar or tap here to share the event with friends and family. The Cafeteria menu is listed under Dining. Here you'll find an easy to navigate weekly menu sorted by day and meal type. Live feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on in the district right now. Whether that's celebrating a student's success or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search Johnson County Schools in the App Store or Play Store to explore the app for yourself. It's everything JC schools in your pocket.
So that's it. Again, we're very excited about that. One of the biggest benefits, I think, of an app will be if there's either an emergency situation where a certain group of people from school need to know, or on those early mornings when we have to call school off, we can get word out by push notification immediately to everybody else's app. So just want to keep you updated on that.
Thank you, Mr. Cochrane. Next item, 6E. On behalf of the board, I'd like to mention that on the superintendent's evaluation, that the board is all in agreement that Mr. Cochrane has done a wonderful job in all aspects of his leadership. He works well with individuals, he listens well. His positive attitude carries over with others, making him a great leader and motivator. We as the board cannot be more pleased with his performance as a superintendent at this point in time. Therefore, we'd ask for adoption of the evaluation that's been done on him. Motion been made, motion been settled. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your leadership. Next, on 6F, Ms. DeGolub.
Since our last board meeting, we accepted bids for Blacktop. Recommendation on the bid is to award R. L. Pagan, Blacktop, and the Sillings.
Is there a motion to accept the Blacktop bid? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on item 6G, Ms. DeGolub.
We recommend that the board renew the contract with Robert Centrist for student accident insurance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6H, Ms. DeGolub.
In your packet, you have the information for the CDL pre-informative school positions. Would you say a motion from the board to approve the doctor of choice?
And to go beyond that, I'd like to recommend, or like to ask you to recommend, Jason Rice to continue services based on the fact that his price has stayed the same, what was it, from last year to this year. And he's been with us. He knows our bus drivers and any issues that might or may not have with the school.
Thank you. I'd like to add too, that best bid is not always the lowest bid and that Dr. Rice has been very accommodating to all the students and all sports activities. And he's at all the high school games, football and basketball. And when time prevails, he does go to some of the other sports games as well. But can't put a price on that. He's there for the coaches and I agree with the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Dr. Rice, second. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Mr. DeGolub.
In hopes of getting the Energy Fair award, although it works out in the coming year, we're asking the board to approve a $1,400 total payment that will be awarded off to the students. And when we find out the winner, we will send the payment to the school and then the school will issue the check to the student, hopefully the day of the fair or the next day.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second on the request? Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6J, Ms. Ayer.
Johnson County Schools has been participating in the non-conditional instructional program for the past several years. This program allows students to continue their learning even when they are unable to attend school. So they do their courses from home. It's time to resubmit that application and request the information to do so.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6K, Mr. Burson.
This is another one of those student teacher MOUs. This allows an emergency family to place student teacher with non-technical resources.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6L, Mr. Burson.
Again, similar to the one above that, this was from Midway University. Allows our teacher education program to work in the guidance under a MOAT.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6M, approved district grant participations with Mr. Ward, Noel Crum, Mr. Yance and Ms. Halsey.
I'll go ahead and begin. On behalf of Mr. Crum and Johnson Central High School, we have four that we would like to request to participate in. The first would be to participate along with the middle school in the KDC Aspire Grant. We will also be hoping to host that same congressional academy at the high school during the summer. And then the KPEGG from Kentucky Power Grant for $45,000. The ARC Power Grant for $600,000. The ARCTA Grant for $50,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
But also, Ms. Burson, have Acelus Grant is the mass information to apply for international science institute grant for the Acelus program. And then Ms. Halsey, you have the Baskin Four Grant.
Yes, we're asking for the American Heart Association, $5,000 for physical education.
Very good. Thank you. Motion? Second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6N, Ms. Music.
Ms. Music can't be here this evening, but she's requesting that the board approve the 2019-20 Certified Evaluation Plan. There's no changes to it for the 19-20 school year, so we just need approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6O, Mr. Cochrane.
I was approached by Mary Beth Castle of the Johnson County Health Department and we had the opportunity to go into the one effort for a suspension, or a tobacco and e-cigarette cessation program. An alternative to suspension. So that's the information that's still going into cooperation with Johnson County.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve their request? Motion's been made second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Also in the packet, you have superintendent's personnel report with no reaction. Item made, is there a motion to adjourn? Second. Motion's made in second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming out to the fine school, Black Gap. Appreciate it.